Good evening. I'll bring this May 10 regular city council meeting to order. Is Pastor Will Finn in here?
No, I don't see him.
Yes, not. If we could please rise. We had a tragic incident here on April 28 involving one of our K-9 dogs. It's a horrific accident. And if we could just have a moment of silence for the K-9 officer as well as his family and our police department. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, council, any agenda modifications? No? Okay. All right, Chief Morris. Come on down. Steve, how are you?
Doing good.
All right. Todd, right?
Jason.
Jason. Oh, okay. Just like Todd, right? All right. This is a proclamation for National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15, and National Police Week, which is May 14 through the 20th. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and a calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas members of the City of Sebastian Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city. And whereas it is important that all citizens understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, which includes safeguarding life and property, protecting citizens against violence and disorder, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the City of Sebastian Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby call upon all residents to observe the week of May 14 through the 20th as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances and further to observe May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities or have become disabled in the performance of their duty.
Thanks, sir. Just like to thank everybody and extend our appreciation to council as well as our community for our ongoing support. And together, we continue to make this a very attractive city. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Bringing everybody up, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. What are we, the Coast Guard?
The Coast Guard Auxiliary.
All right, that sounds good to me.
We're the volunteer side of the Coast Guard.
All right, sounds great. This is a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week, which is May 20 through the 26. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable and as citizens and visitors of Sebastian are fortunate that we have sufficient waterway and ocean resources to accommodate a wide variety of pleasure boating activity. However, boating, particularly in kayaks, canoes, and open power boats can be a risky activity to the unprepared. Whereas using alcohol or drugs while operating a boat or choosing not to wear a life jacket are examples of very risky boating activity, often leading to disaster. On average, 700 people in the United States die each year in boating-related accidents with the preponderance of them occurring while using small open boats or kayaks and canoes. Whereas knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment, we must continue to spread the messages of boating safety measures to protect our friends, family, and fellow citizens, not only during National Safe Boating Week but also throughout the entire year. Whereas thanks to the courageous women and men of the United States Coast Guard who serve our nation and are always ready to help keep our citizens safe in the water, I encourage everyone to visit www.uscgboating.org to learn more about responsible boating. Now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign, including the Wear It Life Jacket Program, and proclaim May 20 through the 26 as Safe Boating Week. I encourage all citizens who participate in boating activities to observe this occasion by learning more about safe boating practices at uscgboating.org and by taking advantage of boating safety education.
Thank you much, very much, Mayor and city council and Jeanette for helping us do the proclamation. As I said, we are the Coast Guard Auxiliary, we're the volunteer side of the Coast Guard, and our primary mission is recreational boater safety. And to that end, we offer boating safety classes and complimentary courtesy vessel and safety inspections. And we'd encourage you to ask us to come help you take a look at your boat. We're not law enforcement guys, we're just volunteer, promoting, volunteers promoting recreational boater safety. And of course, Boating Safety Week's coming up, as you said in the proclamation. May 19 is Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day. So I would encourage everybody to wear your life jacket to work. May 20, we're doing an event at Indian River County Mall. I encourage you to come out down there, wear your life jacket, get a picture taken. There's a world record that we're trying to break, so. Again, thank you very much, Mayor.
It's a world record.
I don't know what it is. Very, a lot of people wearing life jackets.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Leslie Spurlock.
How you doing?
Good.
All right. This is a proclamation for Tobacco-Free Florida Week, which is May 7 through the 13. Whereas smoking cigarettes is a costly addiction and costs many smokers their health, their money, and their time with friends and family. And whereas non-smokers can also relate to the emotional aspect, whether they are encouraging a loved one to quit or supporting someone going through their quit journey. And whereas Tobacco-Free Florida is a statewide campaign dedicated to saving money for individual tobacco users and the state as a whole while improving the health and well-being of Floridians. And whereas since its inception, the program has resulted in a significant decrease in smoking rates among both adults and teens in the state, leading to billions of dollars and countless lives saved. And whereas in 2015 alone, an estimated $3.2 billion in smoking-related healthcare costs was saved as a result of adult smoking decline in Florida. And approximately $17.7 billion cumulative was saved from 2007 to 2015. And whereas Tobacco-Free Florida and Tobacco-Free Partnership of Indian River County educate tobacco users in Indian River County on what smoking costs them and encourage smokers to use Tobacco-Free Florida as the solution to quit smoking with Quit Your Way. And whereas the Tobacco-Free Partnership is committed to the goals and objectives of Tobacco-Free Florida Week through a variety of public health activities and programs, now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May 7 through the 13 as Tobacco-Free Florida Week.
Thank you, Mayor McPartlin, and thank you to the council also and to Jeanette for helping us with this. Tobacco-Free Florida Week does have a theme this year of the high cost of tobacco. Personally, I look at the lives lost that have been prematurely lost. And tobacco can have an addictive quality that is as much or not more than cocaine. That's been proven through research. But there is hope and there's a lot of help for people who want to quit. Quit Your Way is the way to do it. Thank you very much.
Welcome. When's the next class? You have classes several times a month.
They have classes that run every six weeks.
Right, they have several classes if you want to get off smoking or chewless tobacco. Just look tobaccofree.
Florida.
Florida.org.
Tobacco-free florida.org.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. No? You guys are a quiet group tonight. I have a, May 12, the Chamber Concert in Riverview Park, the Bobby Owens Band. It'll be from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And as earlier, I had National Police Week, they're going to have the Reef Placement Ceremony on May 15 at 10:00 a.m. at the Indian River Courthouse in front of the memorial that they have there. Leads us up to our consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right. Leads up to committee reports and appointments. Item 8A, the Citizens Budget Review Advisory Board, Ms. Williams.
Yes. Recently, you added two alternate positions to the board, and Andrea Ring would like to serve as one of those alternates. She's here if you would like to interview her.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Need a roll call on that, or we're all the?
All in favor.
We're all in favor. Fine, fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ring. All right. Leads us up to the Construction Board.
Yes, you have numerous vacancies on there, but I have Jock Crockett interested in serving as the contractor, and he's my only applicant.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We all in agreement? Aye? All right. Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Leads us up to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes. Mr. Kittlebosh would like to serve again. He's not here tonight, he had another commitment, but he would like to serve again. And additionally, you have Bob Hugan, your alternate, would like to move up, and Mr. Crawl would like to serve.
I'm fine with Mr. Kittlebosh.
Me too.
I move to appoint Mr. Kittlebosh to a new term.
Continue.
Agree.
All right. Thank you. And then thank you to the other applicants, and we still have a lot of boards with some openings.
Yes, we do.
And encourage them to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no public hearings tonight. Leads us up to unfinished business.
Wait, committee reports, can we go back to?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Members, I think it was on Monday, I just want to get some feedback from council. I had a meeting, Susan Adams and I had a meeting with the Mental Health Association folks. I think we all got an invitation to like a cocktail party or some organizational thing here in Sebastian a while back, and it was at one of the board members' homes, and I was unable to attend, but we did, I did a follow-up meeting with them. Mental Health Association has a lot of facilities down in Vero Beach. They have a drop-in center and a walk-in center, and they have all kinds of facilities down there, and they are looking to expand up here to get some facilities for us in North County that are accessible. And I think it's not hard to agree that mental health services are desperately needed. Anyway, the bottom line is, we, both Susan and I have offered to help them get some more information and get them off to a good start, and I would like to see if council would consent to letting them do like a workshop here in City Hall or a symposium. Not that we would have to attend, but would be open to us if we wanted to, where they could get the community together, perhaps even record it, that would be the only expense to us, so that the public, and invite the public to come here to do that. So that's my purpose in bringing this to your attention is to see if you would all say, yeah, that's a good idea, or give us a few reasons why we shouldn't do it.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea to do it and put it on the city website under the video archives so people can look at it after it's done.
I didn't see any heads going like this, so.
No, no.
I have no problem. Okay. Well, I will direct them to contact the city manager directly about setting that up in a free time. Thank you.
I'm perfectly fine with that and probably good with the Treasure Coast Community Health which just opened up in Sebastian here, and they have behavioral health services with a full-time psychiatrist and psychologist involved there, you know.
Yeah, we talked about the differences between those programs, which are excellent also, and their programs. They are at just another dimension and a different, it's not that, and they don't want to compete with what we have, they want to add to.
Right.
Yeah.
It's very helpful, they have the drop-in center there in Vero Beach, which assists a lot of people. And I went to mental health court graduation.
Did you go? Oh, I didn't get to go.
And it's just phenomenal to see some people who got involved with the legal system and just getting the help and support they need, that it's, you know, they're up and contributing to society. Any other committee reports? All right. All right, leads up to unfinished business, item 10A, award the certified playground safety inspection agreement with Playground Guardian. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. Back in March, council will recall that we entered into an agreement with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to provide Parks and Rec update to our comp plan. They have a number of deliverables that they have to get to us, but one of the things that we have to provide to them are an inventory and inspection services. So to that end, Mrs. Hernandez from our Parks and Rec Department, she conducted a public bid and brought forth the documents that you have in front of you, and we are recommending Playground Guardian at $13,300 for those inspection services. Margarita, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, council members. I haven't met all of you, but it's an honor to be here, both to meet and see all of you. I don't have anything to add based on what we were looking for and based on what we need to provide to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. We believe, staff believes, that Playground Guardian is the best option.
Thank you.
Just one question, I didn't see in the proposal, an annual cost. There's a software program that they're providing with this, it looks like it might be something worth keeping, and I didn't see an annual cost for that if it.
I believe it's about $1,500 if we do decide to keep this software and maintain it on an annual basis.
Okay.
Yes, because in their quote, I believe they quoted it at zero, but from previous communications with them, it was around $1,500 to keep it annually.
Okay, it might be worth getting that in the budget for '17, '18 to think about keeping it, because at the end of the year, we don't want to scramble it, because it looks like it's a pretty attractive piece of what they're providing, so. I move to approve.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Leads up to item 10B, authorized continuing services agreement to the Schulke Biddle and Stoddard LLC, Continuing Engineering Services Agreement to provide final design for the pickleball courts. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. At the last Parks and Rec meeting, they voted to forward the documentation from Schulke Biddle and Stoddard for CSA Number Two to continue with conceptual planning and cost estimating for pickleball courts at the Friendship Park area. I have in the packet the plan for the pickleball courts, the four pickleball courts, also the cost estimate by Mr. Schulke. Also, I included projected balances in our recreation impact fee funds. Of course, this is where the funds would be allocated from for this project. Also, I included a, what would be a quasi-balance sheet of those rec impact fee funds that was, Jennifer Smith and our finance department got all this together on April 10. So it's a little bit outdated, obviously, but it shows what we are projecting balances in the rec impact fee fund balance. I will say that what we did not factor in, as you see in that balance sheet, the Friendship Park improvements is the pickleball court project, and the estimate from Mr. Schulke is $435,000. So you can see we are about $200,000 over from what the initial estimate was to what Mr. Schulke now thinks would be, and he thinks it's a fairly conservative estimate. So what are the reasons for this? Why would something be so far out of whack of what we thought we were going to be working with six or nine months ago? I think a couple of things have happened, and we've seen this in some of the bids that we've received in other areas. For example, restroom construction down on the Working Waterfront project came in way over budget, almost two and a half times over budget, which we have reevaluated that project, put it on hold for the time being while we renegotiate. So I think that Mr. Schulke's estimates aren't that far out of whack of what we might expect the costs here. So I wanted to make sure the council knows that and brings that into their consideration. Just for full disclosure purposes, that's why I wanted to bring that forward. Another consideration is the football field restrooms, which are budgeted there, and you can see in the balance sheet, is $130,000. I'm thinking that may go higher also once we get to bid that out. So that should all come into your consideration of moving the pickleball project forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffin. And again, this is for $19,200? Is that correct?
Nineteen, nineteen seven, I think, sir.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred, because the original packet, there was a problem, correct?
Nineteen seven.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred.
There was a mistake in the agenda portion of the original packet.
Right.
Which was fourteen seven, that was my error, should have been nineteen seven.
Right, and you sent the email, I just wanted to confirm that, that's all.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, if I can.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were doing eight, four now and four later.
Our instructions from council after we brought CSA One to you was twofold. Mr. Dodd brought up the fact that we wanted to make sure before we continue with CSA One that we were not going to have to purchase property associated with this, which would really throw the budget off scale high. We determined that that was not the case, that we did not need to pursue purchasing property for access, et cetera. So that was one thing. The other thing was that we had to determine exactly what kind of amenities we were going to have and if we were going to do four or two. That was left up to Mr. Watanabe, myself, and Mr. Schulke. Talking with Mr. Schulke, rather than really escalating this beyond $435,000 while still supplying some amenities to the four courts, we thought that that was cost-effective, and at the same time, when, if we go ahead and build the four courts, that we would prep the area for the other four courts.
And I just wanted to verify that publicly, because I think we all received a whole bunch of emails today about, hey, build eight courts! Folks, I love pickleball and I think this is great, and everybody get out and let's go play, but $400,000 for four, that's our starting point, and it's a step down the road. We hope to be able to do that. So as long as we get some tax dollars. Oh, by the way, that Homestead exemption stuff passed.
Oh, God.
Or they're putting it on the ballot, is what I heard today. So four for now, the other four, I agree, we need eight to do good tournament scheduling. Anybody who knows things about tournaments, you have to go by eight brackets, so. Four for now, four more down the road. Half a million dollars, that's a lot of money, but thank you. I just wanted to.
If I could make a statement to that, I think it's important, though, that we make plans for that additional four, because when we actually constructed Friendship Park back in, I think it was 2002 or 2003, maybe '04, when we actually constructed that, the original design was to have several tennis courts in there, where we could have an area where we could have leagues. We didn't do the original, we only built a couple back in there, and they're not as usable as they would have been had we gone ahead and constructed it as we originally planned. So it's nice to say we'll do four now and four later, but I think we need to make sure that we put a plan in place to get the additional four done.
Let's talk about that under Goals and Objectives, item New Business D. I agree with you 100%.
It's my understanding, in watching the Parks and Rec meeting in which Mr. Schulke presented this, that he's doing all of the basic work that needs to be done except construction of the four additional courts. The drainage is there, the conduits for the power is there, everything's there except for the actual, in his current budget, that's $103,000 to actually construct four courts. So everything's there except for that component. Now, there'll be a larger cost than 103 if we come back three years from now, want to build four more, because they have startup costs and so forth associated with that, it might be $150,000 or $175,000. But he's, if I remember watching that meeting, he did a really good job of laying out all of the things that need to be done to put the other four courts there. All the parking's being added, all the street access is being added, all the conduit for the water and the lighting and all that stuff is being put in, so.
And so we already have the plans for all of that, all of that. We own that now in purchasing this, so.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I.
That's all I have.
Okay. I kind of like to look at this a little bit different way, though. And first of all, let me say that pickleball's, all the emails we received, I agree 100% with what people said, it's the fastest-growing sport in the country, all of us old people who can't run around tennis courts anymore are going to play pickleball. You don't have to run so much, they probably have a lot less heart attacks on pickleball courts than they do on tennis courts, and certainly not as many bad knees and messed up ankles. So we certainly need to construct the pickleball courts. However, I think we need to slow this down just a little bit, and I'm not talking about slowing down the construction, we're not going to build them in the 2016-17 budget cycle. That's over the 1st of October, and we're just now doing the second phase of the estimating on this, so they're not going to get built in that cycle. The original estimate of $200,000, if you go back to page 78, I think they used to call these Circle 78, but if you look at that spreadsheet on page 78, if we actually take the starting point of $946,000 in a recreational impact fee, and we drop down into that and take a look at what, adding $235,000 from the pickleball court, which was estimated at 244, if we add additional 235 to that, the $1,300 we just approved in the assessment that's being done on the parks, and then we raise the football field restrooms from $130,000 to approximately $200,000, which it may actually go higher than that, but let's just say $200,000, we're down to $150,000 roughly in the recreational impact fee fund. Now, we've got an additional $170,000, I think, per year that's in the estimates on the budget cycle for that. That depends on us producing 175, roughly 170, 175 building permits per year to do that. That's nice, but I think the county in their evaluation to do their new computer system for their building department only estimated 300 for that same timeframe. So we're looking at 175 in Sebastian to refurbish that fund. If the safety inspection we do on the parks that we haven't done yet actually identifies, let's say it identifies 20% of the park equipment that's either non-ADA compliant or not safety compliant, we probably are looking at a pretty healthy expenditure out of that fund for that equipment, let's just be generous, $150,000. We're now in a deficit in that fund. What I would like to propose is that we approve this engineering cycle, and at that point in time, we close that project in the current budget year and add it to the capital improvement plan at the budget amount that comes out of this engineering study for the '17, '18 budget cycle. And we make this a budget review decision. I'm not saying we don't build the pickleball courts, but let's look at the pickleball court in relation to all of the Parks and Rec funds. in relation to all of the Parks and Rec funds that we're looking at during the 17-18 budget cycle. I don't know whether there's cheaper alternatives or not, but I do know that if we move forward with this because we're thinking $200,000 and it turns out to be 450 or 460, we're not looking at a total picture on it. So my preference would be that we throw it into the 17-18 budget cycle with everything instead of carrying $200,000 from this, you know, that, I think the conversation that the city manager and I had earlier today, I said, people need to realize that when this stuff in this five-year plan, we've written checks for that, basically. Once a five-year plan's approved, the city writes a check. They don't spend the money, but as far as the city's concerned, it becomes a project, that project is funded, and then they can spend that money at any point in time they want to. And so I would like for us to look at this in combination with all the budget items that are going to impact that Parks and Rec area in the 17-18 budget process. So, and I'll do a motion to do that if, in fact, I'll do that, and then we can discuss it and decide whether it gets a second. But I'll move that we approve the engineering study, it's in the document, and that we remove the project from the 16-17 budget and move it into the 17-18 budget cycle.
Now, I'll second that for discussion.
Anyone from the public wish to speak about this engineering study for the pickleball courts? Yes, sir.
Evening, Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. I find a little questionable area, and it's our code. We've got a code 74-54 that established the recreational zones, four of them within our city limits, followed by, that's where it says the parks are in each area, et cetera. And then 74-55 states use of fees paid. And I'll read a segment of it, and it says, "The fees paid pursuant to this article shall be segregated and held in trust by the city in a recreational trust fund, city maintaining records, et cetera. The funds collected from any development shall be used only to acquire, construct, or provide recreational improvement of facilities, but may not be used on a neighborhood park facility located in a different recreational zone. All funds are to be reported, et cetera." That's telling me we have four zones, we have four pockets of money. Our city has the recreational impact fee funds allocation between zones, which you were just discussing, so that here, we're not to take money from A and put it in B, or C, or D, but we're doing it. I couldn't find any other ordinance that said we can do that. Now, creative financing might have done this, but I cannot find anything that says the money from my area A, if that's where it really is, will be used in area B, C, or D. And we're looking at going to area A, B, C, and D, and stripping out of that $350,000 for the Friendship Pickleball Court. And then you go down the list here, you've got your Parks and Rec comprehensive plan, the money to do that, your football field restrooms are included in this, taking money from each of the four areas and putting it in a singular area, not within the area of A, B, or C. What's wrong with this picture? Something's wrong somewhere. Whether it's being done correctly, or it's been done so long, you might want to take a look at your city ordinance that says the money you put in this pot stays in each area. That's section 74-55.
I don't think Barber Street and Friendship Park are neighborhood parks.
They're certainly not. They're regional parks. And it also states in the ordinance that regional parks will share from each of those groups.
Well, if you've got the...
So just continue reading the ordinance, and you would see that it says that, Ben.
"The city maintains records of all fund expended, purpose for which they were expended. Funds must be encumbered for a qualifying project within seven years of being collected." End of ordinance. You might want to put it on the agenda to modify it.
The ordinance is very...
I'm not an attorney, so I have no idea on this. It's just that when I read an ordinance that says there are four places within the city, each one contributes money for their support of their park system.
All right. So you afford a pickleball court, or you against a pickleball court?
Well, I'd like to make a comment on a pickleball court. We had a gentleman at the Parks meeting who said Melbourne had over 1,500 people at one of their tournaments. Now, we got parking facility for that? I believe the engineering layout added another 24 parking spaces, something similar to that. And then you look at our parking lot out here, and I was told today, we can park 200 cars. That's providing every town vehicle is not in this parking lot, any other function like the senior center is not in this parking lot, yeah, we can park them. But there might be more area required if you're looking at this. Take a video, look at the Parks and Recreation meeting that was...
That tournament's a problem. I'd love to have, for us to have to figure out how to solve.
Wouldn't that be great?
Well, it'd be fine.
And by the way, you're not going to have the tournament like of that size with only four courts. Anyone who knows anything about the structure...
I'm not debating that. I'm just saying if you go your...
We're answering your question. If you don't want to listen to the answer, don't ask the questions.
No, you're coming in with something totally different. I made a statement, there was a tournament. I'm not looking at how many courts you have, but the gentleman stated he brought in 1,500 people. And can we accommodate that many people in our parking lot here? That was my statement.
Well, I guess the thing is, we're looking at the engineering report, which we're approving. If we come down to that, I think we can figure it out. There'll be a way.
Okay, that's fine.
All right? Good. Thank you, Mr. Hocker.
Can I get the permit for the three-story elevated parking lot?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think the pickleball courts, according to the ordinances, it would benefit the whole city, so it doesn't really matter which zone it's in. Anyone else wish to speak about the engineering report for the pickleball courts? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, is there an issue with the project shift that we talked about, that I talked about in the motion?
No, sir.
No?
I don't believe so.
When would they start? I didn't understand the question fully. Is there an issue?
Okay. Well, the motion that I made was that we approve the engineering study, we terminate that project at that point in time with the engineering study, and we move a new project into the 17-18 budget cycle for the project in total. That was what I said.
When will they break ground if this goes through?
After we approve it.
Mr. Dodd, I don't think that's up to me.
That was his motion. That's the motion on the floor that we've...
I just want, I saw you mention something to Ken. I didn't know whether you guys were talking about that or not.
No, we were talking about money allocation between zones and things like that. So that's what we were talking about.
Okay. All right. So I didn't know whether there was an issue with that.
Wasn't talking about the motion. No, sir.
Okay.
Because the motion is contingent on going into next year's budget, correct?
Yeah, it's contingent on approval in next year's budget.
Are we funded to be, are we, do we have the funding to do it this cycle?
Yes, we have the funding to do it. The caveat I think the council should consider is that this could not blow up in our face, but we could dwindle that balance down fairly low because of quotes that we get for the Barber Street restrooms, other things that might come in high. I'm just a nervous Nellie about that stuff. It might come in higher than we anticipate. I want us to be prepared for that.
So we should do a better job then of figuring out what these projects are going to cost?
And, yes.
So, I mean, if all of our projects are coming in considerably higher, then we need to do a better job of estimating the actual construction costs of these projects. I think that this is going to be automatic anyway. It's going to autom, we're just approving the engineering, and they're going to do the engineering, then they're going to come back to us for approval on a contract to build. This is going to happen in next year's budget anyway, and I think it would be an automatic anyway. So I think that, I think the question is fine. I think the motion is fine. I think it'll work just perfectly, but I don't necessarily believe it's necessary to go through all of that because I think it would go there anyway, but I support the motion as it is.
Okay. Yeah, because the thing that I don't think that has been really done is I don't think that anyone's really talked a lot about cheaper alternatives. And in the budget process, we may ask for some options on cheaper alternatives, and I think that we haven't, we've talked about building pickleball courts there, we've talked about keeping certain things there, but no one's really sat down and said, okay, is this worth $500,000, or can we do it for three if we look at something different than what we've got going back there? And so I just don't think we've looked at that, and that's the reason that I wanted to do it that way.
I don't think we ever set out to make this an expensive project. I think we always set out to make it an affordable project. So I would dispute the fact that we didn't look at affordable alternatives. I believe we have, and oh, by the way, we originally wanted to do eight pickleball courts and decided it's not affordable. I mean, eight was in the plan to begin with. So we're biting off pieces that we can chew. I would prefer not to leave it to the next budget cycle where all kinds of things can really go awry. I think we've made a commitment to do this. We have the community of, the pickleball players are counting on us. They've been here many, many times. We have promised them courts. I think we need to get on it and get going with the project. If we need to modify it in progress, that's what we're here for.
I don't, I just don't think that the motion's going to slow that process down at all because the ground's not going to be broken until this fall anyway on this project with the engineering that needs to take place and then the approvals and then the permitting. I don't see the ground being broken until the fall, and that's the next budget stage.
Is that a reasonable projection?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but then we have to bring it back again here to approve it.
We're going to have to bring it back after the bids anyway.
Yeah, we have to approve after we get the, once they get the engineering done, we have to approve the engineering. Then it goes out for bid. Once the bid process is over, then it comes back for our approval.
So leave it alone.
At that point, then we have to go into the permitting process.
Has to go to planning, zoning.
So it's going to go into the next budget cycle.
Leave it alone. So leave it alone. Why monkey with it? That's my feeling.
Yeah, I don't think the motion is necessary either. Normally, if the project's not completed by the end of the fiscal year, the money rolls over into the next year if it's in our five-year plan.
Yeah.
So you don't have to just cancel it and then open a new one. At least, that's the way it was when I worked here.
Still the same.
It still is.
Yeah, I'd prefer we just leave it, but there is a motion on the floor.
That makes, I agree, I have to agree, Mr. Dodd, that it's probably not necessary to go ahead and remove it. I don't see it taking place until the fall anyway, and if there's any issues with it, I'd prefer just to have a clean motion and go forward.
Comes back here.
And so I'll just withdraw my second to that motion.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
All right. I'll make a motion then to go forward with it as it is.
Second.
All right. And then the thing is, I think the staff does a tremendous job in trying to get the bids, but what's been happening the last six to eight months, people are just throwing numbers out there and seeing what sticks, and it's not just a Sebastian problem, it's throughout the county and the rest of the state.
Could I offer something else?
Yes.
Mr. Hill made a comment, he's right in part, but that number that we generated, that 244, 570, or 250, whatever it was at the time, is over a year old. That's the number we took to planning and zoning, I think it was in March of 16. So, and I think Councilmember Kinscham was there at the time that we made that presentation to Parks and Rec. And that was the best information we could get at the time. And now, things have inflated, and I just want to be cautious about this, but...
Prices are going up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Leads us up to public input. Mr. Griffin, we have a presentation by Carrie Tominski, who wished to speak. Carrie?
Hi, I'm Carrie Tominski from Sebastian. I am the secretary for Autism Warriors, which is a nonprofit organization. We came in front of you a month and a half ago in regard to our Light Up Blue momentum that we're working on for Sebastian. As part of our fundraiser that we did, one of the items that was donated to us was a magnolia tree from our Busy Bee here in town, beautiful eight-foot magnolia in a 30-gallon bucket. And what we would like to do is offer it as a donation to the city of Sebastian. What we'd love to see happen is have it planted in the park or somewhere around in the park. What we are hoping to do is do a dedication sign to it that says, "Donated by our group." And hopefully, in April, once our town of Sebastian is all on Light Up Blue, we'll be able to light that tree up for the month of April. So we'd like to ask, you know, permission to be able to donate that tree.
All right. I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Griffin?
It's beautiful. I brought a picture if you guys want to see.
I think that's, I love magnolia trees. I have two in my backyard. They're gorgeous. Not everybody likes them, though, but I love them. I think they're beautiful.
We didn't get to select the tree. That's what they donated.
And they're very expensive. I'll tell you that. So thank you for the donation. I don't have a problem with that. My caution is, having seen, I'm in favor of it, but I would like you to really take ownership for anything that you want permanently around the site. There are some things throughout the city that have been donated in perpetuity. Something down in the park, Riverview Park, there's a plaque down there, and it got all deteriorated, and somebody says, what's that? Who's, who does that belong to? And sure, I didn't even know it was there. No one knew it was there. So now it's become the city's obligation to take care of it. So I think you need to work very closely with the city manager to make sure that in perpetuity, you know, somebody's going to take care of the plaque or the lights or whatever.
Absolutely.
Whatever's needed.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wish to speak about something not already on the agenda? Yes, sir.
My name is Roy. My name is Roy Woodall. I've been around Sebastian for 25 years. I live on 7895 134th Street, Sebastian, Florida, which is actually in Roseland, but I have lived 10 years in Sebastian previously. Anyway, I have a lot of praise here for your boat ramps and everything else about the city, but I am a boater, and you've got two of the nicest ramps, probably as good as any in Florida, and it kind of goes along with safe boating and saving money. I know there's some real issues. I talked to Joe the other day, and he suggested I should come in. Your two ramps, the mainstream ramp, which I know you spent a lot of money on and improved it immensely, I used it today. I understand that there is a problem there, that there's a lot of sand, and I've seen it, a lot of sand ends up on the ramp, and I think along the way somewhere, somebody has to remove that sand. What causes that is 90, I'd say 95% of the boaters that use your ramps do not have power winches, and they take their boat off the trailer and put their boat on the trailer with their engines, their boat engine. And the boat engine, they gun the engine, and the boat flies up on the trailer, and when they want to get the boat off the trailer, they put it in reverse, and it churns the water up unbelievably. And now, a little 15-foot boat is not much of an issue, but I've seen 40-foot boats there with twin engines, and I've seen big outboard motors, three outboard motors, and it's unbelievable. But it, what happens, it blows mud and sand away from your area. And in the case of Main Street being as deep as it is, I'm not sure exactly, but a lot of them back off the trailer without, the trailer, the boat won't slide off, so they put it in gear and back off. Well, that shoots, and sand up on the ramp. That's just one thing. I notice the docks torn up there. Also, when the big boats, or any boat, power on, they're blowing not only sand away from the ramp, but away from the surrounding docks, the little docks, which are very nice. I mean, it's beneficial, and it makes it nice to get on and off your boat, but now they're unusable nearly, mainly at the yacht club, and it's like, it's just a nightmare. they're unusable nearly, mainly at the yacht club, and it's like, it, it's just a nightmare there right now. And I understand that you're getting ready to spend a lot of money to repair all that. I've seen boat ramps, which is this concrete, the highway kinda continues into the water, and it goes down into the water, and you can back down. And when you have that prop washed, I've seen and heard of ramps collapsing, because it's concrete, and concrete is sitting on top of dirt, and when that dirt gets washed out, and certain circumstance, a big boat comes in, the, the, the end of that ramp have, I've heard of them breaking off. And I, one particular one, it was a trailer and a pickup truck, when it broke, they went in the water, they went in and under, underwater. Again, Main, Main Street is not as bad. Right now, I'd say the yacht club is really bad, the dockage, but those docks are right there, and they get, and if you got pilings down, and they drive up new pilings in, down into the mud, well, that holds them. And if the mud goes away, then they're just kinda just standing there, support from maybe some of the dockage that's further out or whatever. And then, we just had a little storm here last, little hurricane brushed here, and there was a lot of damage, and I think it was because those docks were undermined. You know, they're, you know, the, the mud's gone, and there's nothing to support them, and that wasn't much of a hurricane we had, but there was a lot of damage to those docks. I, myself, I've been boating for 60 years and, and trailer boating, and where I'm from, everybody used roller trailers and power winches. A little boat, you can hand winch, but a 20-foot, upwards of 20-foot boat is a lot of work to, to hand winch on. I mean, all trailers just about come with a hand winch. I was at Main Street today, and I looked around the parking lot, and there was not one power winch in that lot. A power winch, you hook it to the battery in your vehicle, you hook your cable on, and you stand there, and the boat comes up with a, with a power winch. And Power Winch is a company that makes power winches, costs $200, $300, $400, depending on how large your boat is. I've been using them all my life, on my 18-foot boat, I have one on my 22-foot boat, and that trail, that boat comes on and off that trailer, does no damage to the bottom of the sand in any of those areas. And I think if, if, it would be a great thing, I, I've been watching, and you stand there, and you're waiting for the next guy to launch his boat, or he's getting his boat in, and it's like, I don't know if you've seen it, but when those boats are there, and they got one or two big props turning, to push that boat up that hill onto their trailer, it's unbelievable. You just, the waters just churn, and, and it's muddy, and then, a lot of it settles back down, but if you got a tide going, it doesn't settle down, it goes this way or that way. And of course, it goes that way outward. And then, in the case on Main Street, it's actually going the opposite direction, and it's getting a lot of sand up on the ramp.
Okay, so let me see if I get this right. You want all the boats to be required to have power winches?
I, I think it would be a great thing. I know, I don't know whether, it's probably kind of a Florida thing, but you guys are footing the bill for that ramp and those docks, and, and it's like, if you put a sign up and said, "No power," you must have a power winch or a hand winch, your boat's on and off the trailer.
Okay.
And if that was done, that would totally eliminate, and I would say it would double the life of your dockage and your rampage and, and the whole thing. It would just, you could build something really nice, and you have, had, built very nice ramps in both places, and they're being destroyed.
Okay. Anything else? Cause your, your time has passed, sir.
Okay, well, that would be something to think about, a sign and a stiff fine for not, not abiding by that. And also, I, I always try to help the guy ahead of me, if I'm waiting to get, I know I'm taking a little time, I go and help the next guy, but if there was a volunteer group, and I would be the first one to sign up for a weekend, and probably just weekends, wouldn't have to be a, a seven-day thing, but somebody, a volunteer group, that would put a couple people there to help people get their boats on and off. And, and like I say, it's, a lot of people are totally prepared, a lot of people aren't. You get a strong east wind, and it's a nightmare. Even, you know, if you have everything right, there's, things will go wrong. But think about that. I, I've been, been dealing with boat ramps and boat winches a long time, and, but...
All right, thank you, sir.
I think it would save the city a lot of money, and it would, and it would be, downtime would, I think, would be less, because there'd be less damage. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir. Joe, maybe you send Frank down there, look about this sand issue, you know, underneath, and it would be nice to put up a sign, "Be a Good Neighbor," as this gentleman is helping other people. You wish everybody would help everybody.
He is awful kind.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what we have around here, is good people. I, I did learn at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning, the Sebastian Chamber of Commerce, there is an issue right now, apparently, the water level is very, very low in, in the river, the entire river. The water is way down. There are docks that people cannot use at all because the water level is so low, and right here in town especially, I think that someone down in the Tiki Bar area said they, they can't use their winch. It's, it's a county, it's a river-wide problem. We, we're in a drought.
Right.
So, that's not helping that sand problem, because you have to go out farther.
Right. So, if Joe, he came and talked to you, if maybe Frank can go take a look at that situation and let us know a little bit further?
I know Councilmember Kinchen remembers this. It's kind of weird, because at the Main Street boat ramp, we get sand that's built up into the ramp that we have to have removed periodically, but yet, at the yacht club, the sand goes out. Now, whether it's because what Mr. Woodall was talking about, that people are powering on only at the, at the yacht club ramp, I don't know. But obviously, we're gonna start our rebuild project with Brothers Construction, and the first group of docks they're gonna be working on, they're gonna start at the yacht club complex and work north. So, we will have, that's gonna be closed for a little bit while they complete the work, so we'll check that out.
When is work starting? I was asked that today. When does work start?
I think we have a permit coming in 10 days, is that right, Frank?
Uh, uh, yes. Sorry, Frank Watanabe, you're city engineer. Regarding the, the four piers, the good news is, we got the approval to remove the Boudreaux pier. We got the, it was a St. John's permit, so we got that permit, and we're now working on the Army Corps permit for the remaining piers. And of the four piers for the Army Corps permit, we submitted our RII information, which is a request for additional information, just two days ago. They're gonna forward that on to the National Estuary Review, and there's a 10-day period where there's, if there's no comments, then our Army Corps project manager, she, she shows a permit.
Has Brothers been given the notice of receipt yet?
Brothers needed another two weeks to mobilize and get their equipment going, so they're looking at about two to three weeks to come here and get it all ready to go. So, timing-wise, it may work just right. We'll get our permit, let's say, in two weeks. They'll be here in two weeks to mobilize, and we'll start hopefully in two to three weeks.
Or maybe June 1st.
About two weeks, start, and then our, our completion, if everything went very smoothly, when, when will we be done?
120 days.
That's what I thought, by, by fall. Okay, great.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on something not already on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. Just a quick comment on that gentleman prior. I've been quite involved boating, et cetera, at both of the facilities. Our storm that came in was the major cause of pushing the dirt up onto the ramp. Prior to that, there was very little dirt coming up. Most people, when they put their boat in the water, put it in reverse. That would tend to push sand underneath our ramps. And then, when they're coming back in, all right, some of it gets pushed away. What you're referring to about that heavy sand was right after the hurricane that came in. Not what I'm here for. This is a comment about a young lady in our community who went through the school system here, had a lot of support from her family, and this is called, an organization called Now, this is an organization that one of our members, or one of our community child, children, through their upbringing and a good work ethic and doing things for others of having less than they, this organization supports Habitat for Humanity. The young lady's name is Casey Gilliam, and she's participating in a ride across America through this organization. And this is just to show the ethics of our people from this city, their way of looking at things. This organization has produced in six, 2002, $6.2 million in their bike riding, and they've donated to Habitat 225,000 hours, and since 2012, they've helped repair 3,250 homes. Now, this is all done by their three cross-country bike rides. The one that Casey is involved in at the moment, and she had to fund herself over $4,000 just to go on the ride, so that they can collect funds, donate it to them, to donate to Habitat for Humanity. She'll be riding 4,095 miles. Now, she's graduating from the University of Florida, and her plans are to go with a PhD to further her education, and in helping others, it'll be for industrial development and research. But again, that's a 77-day bike ride, 4,000 miles, in, again, in 77 days. Out of that, while they're biking, the whole group, how many will be in it, they're allocating 12 building days in different states at different Habitat for Humanity homes. And I, I just think it was something that, you know, pretty much of public interest, that people from our city, what they're doing, where they're helping, and again, it's Habitat for Humanity helping all people that are maybe a little under the weather at this point, just step them up a bit. It was just a matter of public interest, nothing more.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Good luck to Casey. Hope she raised a lot of funds. Habitat for Humanity does a great job. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Jim Sonnycamp, Sebastian. I'd like to talk to you tonight about the, the dog Diesel that died, that, that the police officer had, and I really feel for the guy, because I know how I'd feel if my dog Spike died in a hot car. But, you know, there's, there's several more children and pets that are dying in hot cars. And we have this heat sign, which is on, it's on the city TV site, and this is in some of the vets' windows, some of the businesses, in honor of the dog Diesel that died. Is there some way we could promote this more, maybe on the city vehicles, or some way promote this for the dog, getting this out more?
Well, sir, we can see, drop it off to Mr. Griffin, and we can see about getting out there. It is coming up on the hot months, and, you know, you can't leave a dollar an animal in there.
Yeah, this is, with the new law now where you can break a window, I'm even getting hit a lot more, my dog, it's, people are really taking this serious about dogs and hot cars. If, if it saves one dog, it's worth, or one kid, it's worth promoting the, the sign. But I'd appreciate if we could push this more.
Sure, I know, I know that, that thing is up on Channel 25, cause you came last year when you brought that up.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah, and it's also on our Sebastian Bark Park, it's on there. And we, even if someone wants one free, we'll mail one.
That's it.
We're doing all we can. Thanks.
Right, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right, that brings us up to new business. Mr. Griffin, you with me? New business, 12A, approved the automatic renewal on Second Amendment to Waste Management's franchise agreement.
We are approaching the date on July 1st of 2017, of the auto, auto renewal date, and so, obviously, before that happens, I wanna bring this forward to council and give you my recommendation that that auto renew take place, that would extend the contract until 30 June of 2023. Just from what I've seen while in the city manager's office is, how Waste Management has performed in the last couple of years, and they're responsive to complaints that I may send to them, and I appreciate the service they give to the city. I think one of the things that, that really helped out was the, the green and blue waste cans, recycle cans and, and garbage cans, and before, I remember when we didn't have them, how un-uniformed things looked on trash day. Now, we have, we have those, all those cans are uniform, and it's, I think it's a pretty good appearance that Waste Management has, has provided that for us. There's also, I'm recommending the approval of a Second Amendment to the, to that, to the franchise lease, and one of the things in the current franchise agreement is that we have two community cleanup days per year. One is scheduled during the Earth Day event, which this year was in April 22nd, I think it was, just a few weeks ago, and it was a resounding success. We do electronic recycling, and we do shredding, and also, over at the Barber Street Sports Complex, we do white goods pickup and, and large items pickup, Waste Management does that. When we, when we would schedule the second event in the fall, or even in the winter, we got, we got pretty much no response. So, we are recommending that we only keep the one event, the one community cleanup event, and paper shredding, e-waste collection, et cetera, and add the following, as I've depicted in your, in your packets, some, some recycling amenities that the city would get in exchange for eliminating that community cleanup, one community cleanup event. So, I'm recommending approval of the franchise agreement auto renewal, and number two, I'm approving, or recommending approval of the Second Amendment to the franchise lease, or franchise agreements, excuse me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffin. Move approval of the franchise agreement auto renewal and the Second Amendment.
Second for discussion?
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak about the Waste Management renewal and the amendment? All right. Ms. Coy?
Totally agree. I can't believe five years has gone by, oh my God. Where'd it go? It's amazing that...
Actually, it's, it's four years.
Four, okay, but it's still, it seems like a year ago, we just went through this process, and it's been such, I, I agree with your comments at the, the, the blue and the green, providing those bins has been enormously helpful. One, financially, to our residents, to me, because they're very expensive. Those, those commercial cans, how much are they, Deana?
About $70 apiece.
Seventy, about 70 bucks apiece, and if, if they break one, I get another one. Or if it, if the sun breaks them, like all the other plastic in, in the state of Florida, we get another one for free. So, it's, it saved us as consumers, it's far more attractive, it's uniform-looking. And oh, by the way, the new schedule, I used to have to put my something out every day. One day was garbage, the next day was recycle, the next day was the liard debris, and then the following day was another garbage day. Every day, there was something out there, by my house in my area, two days now, and because these cans are so large, you know, decent size, they're, you know, I don't put garbage out twice a week, ever. I have to do it once a week, cause it gets real stinky, but recycle, I can go, I can last for two weeks. There's two people living in my home... There's two people living in my home every two weeks. So, it has, what it has done is made it very easy for me. And I think most people are very, now that the schedule is down pat, I'm not getting the complaints, say they didn't show up, you guys, we finally got those all leveled out. Service has been great. So, I've been inclined, I'd be inclined to renew this, very, very, but there's just a couple of things, you know, I'm always in a, we're giving up one thing. I want to reinforce the fact that hopefully, commercial recycling for the city will be accomplished. That's the amendment, too. I think that's really important at all of our buildings and grounds, the ball fields So, commercial recycling. And then, where do we stand with the commercial recycling for our businesses? We brought this up at the last meeting, and it turns out, I believe, that the initial deal for our business community has gone away. It no longer exists. Can we talk about that?
The, that agreement was the First Amendment to the franchise agreement, which was back a year ago, well, May of last year. And part of that agreement was a transfer of money to the city because of the CNG facility. Number two to that agreement was the...
Special rate.
Special rates for commercial recycling in our CRA district. That expired, I think it was in August of 2016. Is that correct, Deana?
Correct.
If you'd like, Deana, maybe could address the council, and that would clear some things up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, yeah, if someone could come up and just...
All right. Come on up, Deana and Bob.
Because we just approved the, council just approved the enclosure. We are going to give commercial business, some money if they apply for it, to make enclosures. We want to encourage commercial recycling. Is there any chance we could reinstitute this special rate for a short period of time again? Because I know one of the reasons that our businesses didn't take it up is because having the containers, it was constraining for them to have to build a special container because of our codes. I'm not inclined to want to change our codes. I think we need to keep that. So, would that be something that you would consider adding?
Certainly. Vice Mayor Famae. Good evening, everyone. Deana Ryder Hicks, Public Affairs Manager with Waste Management. My colleague, Bob Dela Cruz, he's our Operations Site Manager for Waste Management Viro Hauling here in the county. And Madam Vice Mayor, your timing could not be more perfect.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Give me some good news.
Yes, and I will explain to you all why. As Mr. Griffin mentioned, it was this time last year that we enacted this promotion here in the city of Sebastian where businesses were able to, we encouraged commercial recycling, and they were able to take advantage of a three-months-free promotion.
That's right.
The county liked the promotion that we did so much here in the city of Sebastian that they asked us to institute a similar program for Indian River County. We are right now just beginning to actively engage promoting a very similar promotion, another three-months-free promotion. So, we are going to be actively promoting another three-months-free promotion to encourage commercial recycling in Indian River County and the city of Felsmere as part of the county franchise. And again, businesses will be able to call us during a specific time span. We'll be promoting it now through June. They'll call us in July, and at which time, they'll be able to take advantage of having the months of September, October, and November, three-months-free promotion. And if a city of Sebastian business should call us during that time, we will certainly be happy to honor that request and give them the benefit of the same promotion.
Do we need to write that?
Does that need to be written in the deal somehow, as an amendment?
Well, I was...
I mean, I like you, Deana, but, you know, contracts are contracts.
I was going to ask, maybe suggest that perhaps they could do that in a mailer to the businesses and let them, give them notice of that.
What we could do, the mailer has already gone out. What we could do is provide some copies here, Joe, if you think that would work, have some copies available in City Hall. This is going to be spread countywide. I'm sure there will be Sebastian businesses that will get, that will get wind of it.
And this does not just include the Riverfront District, the CRA, this is all businesses, 512, this is even more than I asked for.
Correct. I'm sure they will get wind of it, particularly businesses that have multiple locations. And we're fully expecting that businesses will call us and say, well, I have a location in the city of Sebastian. Can I enact this program there as well? We will certainly honor that.
We can help advertise that. That's super. So, that's more than I asked for, but I'm not done asking. One more thing.
Certainly.
I really, really, you know, I love those solar garbage cans and recycle cans. We have four of them, I believe, three, four of them. Can we have two more of those?
Let me look into that, and that's certainly something that we could, we could certainly look into.
For folks who, hey, it's contract, see, people are snickering out in the crowd, but this is contract time. This is the time you ask for all the extra stuff. So, and this is good stuff. They're really attractive, solar-powered recycle bins and garbage bins that crush the materials, and then little alarm or a little light goes off when it needs to be emptied. If you could throw in two more of those, it would be greatly appreciated. They're very attractive, very attractive. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
If you don't ask, you don't get, right?
That's right. You don't ask for stuff.
Any further council discussion?
I just have one question, Joe. Have we received the disaster response plan that was required? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All of that, my only question.
All right. Any other questions?
Let's hope, I was going to give you a time-certain that we don't need it.
Thank you.
And we have included that in our emergency management plan. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Just to throw out, Bob is very receptive. Any problems, and it's not just the city of Sebastian, I get complaints, I get complaints from Viro, I call Bob, everything's taken care of. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Except the 12B, support the Indian River County emergency order, the burn ban. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. I was given notice of the emergency order issued by Jason Brown a few weeks ago, and obviously, we're going to go ahead, I would think that council will go ahead and support this. I want, I'm doing this more of a notice thing for council and also for the public, that there is a burn ban in effect. We have it posted on Channel 25 and also on our Channel 99, and also on our website. And when and if this burn ban comes down, the emergency order, then I'll remove those notices from those appropriate places. But it's in effect now, and given instructions to Public Works in particular to watch out for any listed burning and report that right away so we can prevent a catastrophe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Except the 12C, authorize the city's sponsor of the annual shrimp fest and craft beer, hullabaloo, in Riverview Park. Mr. Griffin?
I was approached by the, some of the principals who operate in the shrimp fest out in Felsmere for the past couple of years, and they had an interest in moving this festival to city of Sebastian Riverview Park in 2018 and beyond. I'd like the presentation they made to me, that's why I'm bringing this forward for council consideration tonight. They are interested in bringing this into Sebastian on a permanent basis. The dates for next year's event, if approved, would be 16, 17, 18 March 2018. That would not interfere. The only other thing we have going on in March of 2018 would be the Pelican Island Festival. That is going to be on the weekend of March 3rd. Those folks, I believe, are here tonight to make a presentation. Mark is here, Mark Gingras. So, I'd like to ask, with council approval, Mark to come up and make his presentation to council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and Mr. Griffin. We, three years ago, about three years ago now, we started a project with the Rotary Club of Sebastian and the Exchange Club of Felsmere to bring a festival, mostly to bring money for, to raise funds for our youth sports, mostly sports and recreation. There was a need in our community, North Indian River County, both Felsmere and Sebastian, for that need. So, we spent about a year and a half putting together with the Exchange Club and my, and our Rotary Club and a committee of about nine people, this festival. And thank God, the first year we did it out in Felsmere was wonderful. We also had the support of the farm, FOA, out there, and since, I know you know that it struggled financially this last year, they no longer gave us our support last year. And it really hurt our festival. We expanded the festival last year to allow for more people, more restaurants. The restaurants are all from, most of the restaurants, except for Marsh Landinger, from Sebastian, and one from Grant and one from Viro, excuse me. What we're trying to do with bringing it to Sebastian is we would love to do a similar to like Joe presented, to the clam bake. I'm also Director of the clam bake and in charge of the vendors. So, very familiar with how that all started, and three of the members on our, on our committee are Sebastian clam bake directors. It's very important for us to, one of the reasons we started it, and I call my co-conspirator, Pat Ravizio, was that we wanted, what the clam bake did for infrastructure, we wanted for the kids to be able to actually use that infrastructure. We wanted to give them baseballs, softballs, we wanted to give them basketballs, if they needed money for traveling out of town, things they needed to have that they're asking their parents for, they're begging out front of Walmart or Publix. So, that's where the money wanted to go to. So, what we, what we put together was a festival, and it's been very successful. We employed restaurants in our community to cook the food rather than, rather than we cook the food. So, the restaurants become involved. The restaurants are actually, their beneficiaries are the recreational clubs, and they're chosen by the committee and approved by our rules that we have, that we've set up. With bringing that from Felsmere to here, we feel that we'll be able to raise more money with the city's support. We'll be able to raise the kind of money that would really make a difference in this community to our children. Of course, the Rotary Club of Sebastian also receives money from this, and so doesn't the Exchange Club of Felsmere. And most of that money that we use, we use for our programs, which are basically generated for kids in a community, in one way, shape, or form another, whether it's education, recreation, feeding some kids, getting some backpacks, loading them up with school supplies, that kind of thing. So, this whole program we put together, we, it's been successful. We think by moving it to the Riverview Park here and having the city's support will make it that much more successful. And the fact that we're, we're still going to call it, we're still doing shrimp, it's important to us to keep that along. That's what we started with, that's what we'd like to do. And even though the shrimp farm's not there, our shrimp comes from Florida. We want Florida Gulf shrimp or Atlantic shrimp. We don't want some other shrimp. So, anyway, that's part of, that's a big thing. The kids that receive the money are youth, whether it's Sebastian Soccer, whether it's the crew, whether it's the football, Youth Football Sharks and Cheerleaders Association, whoever needs that money. So, over the last year, we've given, and you've seen the packet, we've given away $67,000 in two years to those kids and also to our clubs to be used in our area. Last year, we promoted a anti, through the Rotary, our club project was anti-bolting. It was our district governor for 6930 wanted this to have, to get involved with the community with the anti-bolting program. We put one on at the, with the permission of the middle school, we put on a program. And it was, I don't know how successful it was, but if it gets one kid from possibly thinking about committing suicide, that's all that matters. So, things like that are what we use, as a club, we use the money for. The beneficiaries, they're allowed to use that money for what they need, which was, it could be soccer balls, it could be travel expenses, it could be food, or, for instance, the crew is, crew is one of them, they're buying a boat. The girls rugby team went and played in a national, I think it was a national tournament last year. Money for that was, we gave them money to go to that last year. So, with the city's support, we'd love to move it here. We think it's a better venue for us. We think we'd be able to raise a lot more money. And we have a great committee that's worked very hard to make this a successful already, event already. So, any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mark. I make a motion for staff to continue to work with the event principals on a formal agreement to bring back the council. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
Of course.
I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, you get...
Before, I didn't want you to walk all the way back there. Just real quick.
It's okay. Go ahead, Ian.
I know just about everybody in the back row there, the crowd you brought, and they're hardworking. I'd be very excited to have this come here. And just so people know, Felsmere, this has got the blessing from Felsmere. We're not stealing it from them. I even asked Susan Adams today, Commissioner Adams, how do you feel about this? And there's, there's no hard feelings. This is the best for everybody. So, I would just have some quick questions about your structure, so that we prevent any clam bake previous issues. Clam bake's running really smooth. Everything's going good. It's down pat. Are you, well, how is your structure? Where does the money come and go into? Is it a 501(c)(3)?
It's a 501(c)(3) through our Sebastian Rotary Club's recreational foundation. Our books are, books, our books are wide open. I'd show them to you tonight. We have CPA that keeps track of our books. All the money that goes in and goes out goes through a recreational fund.
So, you just, everything that comes in and all the side items, you just have a separate shrimp fest line item?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we have a recreational fund, and we have a checking account that's strictly for shrimp fest.
Perfect. Okay. And that's his job to verify and do all that. I just...
Oh, yeah, we know.
Ask one time publicly.
Yeah.
And you do understand, and I know Pat and the clam bake folks all understand, that we are very, very concerned about driving in and out, and that we have some very strict, we're trying really hard to save our park, and we want to, we want to keep this as intrusive, the least intrusive as possible. So...
We would employ the same techniques we use at clam bake and work with the city.
And you're willing to work really hard to keep that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sure. That's basically it, sir. I just wanted to make sure we all understood the, kind of the game plan. I think this is great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public wish to speak about this? Any further council discussion?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say that I've been to the event both, both years. It's fantastic. You know, the first year, it was probably a little bit overwhelming because there were likely more people than you were anticipating there that year. But the next year was a lot smoother, and I look forward to having this event down at our park.
All right. Any other? No? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Voice, I mean, motion carries. Thank you.
Except the item 12D, city council goals and objectives for FY 1718. Mr. Griffin?
Actually, the clerk, Ms. Williams, had presented me with this, the resolution, and I had realized that we were beyond schedule. So, got this on the agenda this evening for your consideration. This is controlled by Resolution R 12-08. The, I learned from Mr. Kilgore today that the HR department has, has provided each member of council with evaluation sheets for charter officers. And tonight, we, this is going to substitute, as I understand it, as the workshop for goal-setting by council members.
All right. So, fill out your evaluations and get with staff and discuss them. Any other council discussion?
Pickleball courts.
Pickleball courts? You have them come in at $50,000?
I want to talk about pickleball courts.
All right. Any other discussion this matter? No? All right. Mr. Ginsburg's in on with us tonight. Mr. Griffin, you have anything further?
Mr. Ginsburg was given a pass. He's feeling under the weather. My matter is, I just have one thing, and this is a little, a little distasteful. There's been some unfortunate things that have gone on at the dog park, of all places. So, there's been some conflict out there. I'm talking about the humankind, not the canine kind. And it may have filtered back... And, um, I, it may have filtered back, uh, to council and also to members of the public. Uh, we are, uh, going to have to, um, kind of insist on some civility out there, I think, and if things escalate, uh, any further, then we'll have to take more drastic actions, but I just want council to understand, I'm aware of it, uh, we are going to deal with it in a humane possible, a humane way possible, and, um, I'll report back if, uh, if there are any adverse things that happen out there. That's all I have, thank you.
So, I guess that goes, there's no such thing as bad dogs, just bad owners.
A good one.
All right, all right. Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
All right, well, he's up to me. Uh, May is Foster Care Awareness Month, we're in need of a lot more foster homes in our community for when children have to be removed from their homes. So, anybody interested in becoming a foster parent, feel free to give me a call, 772-453-8540, or look me up on Google, they, I got a bunch of numbers, everybody seems to find me. Ms. Coy?
Um, I just, uh, wanted to verify with council, we have a sign ordinance that includes political signs, um, and I believe it says 75 days out, is that correct? That, we did not change that while I, you know, I was only absent once this year, um, uh, and so that's in force, if you are running a political campaign, um, you have seventy, seventy-five days before, you can put your sign up. Uh, so, Mr. Griffin, I would ask that, that you would deliver, uh, a copy of the ordinance to, uh, No Name Bar, Mr. Williams, um, and anyone else who, because in the county, we see a lot of signs for the agricultural guy out there.
Way out early, huh?
Man, oh, man, that's a year and a half. Forty, he hasn't, I, apparently he got the word, don't do it in Sebastian, because there aren't any within our city limits. But I would ask that, that we take, 'tis the season, um, but it's not, it's not even close to 75 days before the next election, so, I'd like us to enforce our sign or get rid of it, our sign ordinance. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Dodd?
At, uh, one item, if, if I can, um, there is a, a property inventory being developed, I understand, by the city right now for excess city-owned property. I would like, as part of the budget cycle, for us to review that and talk about the possibility of whether there's any of that property we might decide that the city wants to divest itself of, um, and, um, and just, you know, just as a, from a review point of view. Uh, Mr. Griffin, uh, and I have talked about this, and, uh, he is in the process of producing the inventory, it's just that, um, I, I think if we agree that it might be something we might try to do, it might give him a little bit more leverage in allocating the funds he needs to allocate, and, and step through the process with that.
All right, anything else? Hmm, anything else?
No, uh, no, that's it, thank you.
All right, Ms. Dell?
No.
Ms. Kitchen?
Nope, I have nothing.
All right, being no further business, this meeting is adjourned, good night.